Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Mooresville Board of Commissioners' June 20th, 2023 Board Meeting. This time, the Chair will call the meeting into order and ask if you could please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for an opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for time to celebrate with those that have gone through our academies, and, Father, for a chance to debate the things of the town. And we just pray for wisdom for all decisions made today. We pray for safety for our citizens that are out in the storm, and, Father, that you would just help us to be your eyes and your ears and do what you would have us to do in your name. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, this evening, we have several presentations, the first being the Mooresville Fire and Rescue Citizens Academy Participation Recognition. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Captain David Conrad.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Town Manager. As Mayor said, I'm Captain David Conrad, Engine Four, which is housed with shepherds. And I believe this is our ninth year of the Citizens Academy. Computer systems changed back around 2016, so we don't have records before that, or I couldn't find them. So it's one of the coolest things I get to do is present our fire department. Very proud of it and everything else, and the citizens enjoy it. They get to do a lot of hands-on stuff. So I would like to call everybody up, people that are here. There's few that are out of town. We had eighteen registered in the class. I believe we have ten tonight, including a few town employees, so they got to see what the fire department does in our town. So, recognize Alisa Rico, Cortland Burns. Lynn and Stephen Miller. Shannon Peterson and Marcus Cooper. Brittany Coral. Robert Kagan. Melissa Durham. And Tina Hess.
Captain, if you're agreeable, I'm going to invite the Commissioners off the dais to come join in a group photo.
Please, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, how about a big round of applause for these folks? Commissioners, we'll be doing a couple more photo ops, so we'll be getting up and down a couple more times, but this is really exciting. I want to congratulate everyone who was here and who did participate in these academies. The next one, Commissioners, is the Mooresville Police Department. It's a 2023 Citizens Academy graduation. Those participants are here, and I'd like to recognize Assistant Chief Dyson.
It's like most of my folks are here, so. All right, well, Mayor, Town Manager, Commissioners, we want to come before you tonight to publicly recognize the folks that completed our 2023 Citizens Academy. This is the largest class we've had. We typically cap it at fifteen, but this year, we had such great interest. The day of, we quit taking applications, I had twenty on my desk, and I couldn't figure out how to decide which ones could go in and which couldn't. So we decided to take them all in. Our class had people that were new to Mooresville, people that had been here for a while, gracious, excuse me, and one lifelong resident that I remember playing with when I was a, we were both little kids on Broad Street. Just like me, he can't get out of here, I guess. We spent thirteen weeks. These folks gave over Tuesday nights, they came in, sat through classes, put on, taught by members of our department to learn about different parks of the department, specialized units and divisions, and kind of what, while we do things we do. They got to do quite a few things. We tried to make our academy where it's less PowerPoint-oriented and we're just throwing stuff at them, get them more involved. You see some of the photos going by there? We did mock traffic stops where they didn't know what they were going to be encountering, what would happen. We had them doing, showed them how we work wrecks. We put them on a golf cart with fatal vision goggles, and several of them did great. Several of them realized they weren't driving after our graduation. So, we'd like to recognize them at this time. First one on my list is Richard Beck. We had several husband-and-wife teams that came through this time. John and Anna Marie Stopko. Robert and Susan Leonard. I got it right this time?
Yeah, she's not here.
Eddie Kariker. Charles Grimes. Gina and Anthony Calabro. Amy Bush, whose husband went through our 2022 class and told her how much fun it was she had to go through this time. Ray Mulhern. I don't see. JJ's not here. Julia's not here. Robert Green. He's not here. Jake. I'm not going to try you. I've tried for thirteen weeks, Jake, and I can't do it. Jabowski. Clyde Parker. Diane Brown. And Kate Tinkie. I know, I've got something special for him. We hold a graduation ceremony at our last week, where we give out plaque certificates. Well, Pete Brown thought it was more important to go off with his family and spend time on the beach. When I asked Pete to be at graduation, he sent me a photo saying, "No, this is where I'm at now." So here's your certificate. Please.
Commissioners, we do have a third presentation this evening. This is from the Mooresville Youth Council, and a video presentation. And the Chair would like to recognize Benjamin Cowan, who is the President of the Mooresville Youth Council.
Hello, everyone. First, I would like to thank the Mayor, Town Staff, and Audience for being here today. And I would also like to thank a few other people before we show you a video we made recapping everything we did and all the hard work we did throughout the year. So first, I want to thank Jane and Shannon, our co-advisors, who did a wonderful, excellent, amazing job and worked extremely hard for the whole entire council to ensure that everything went perfectly as planned, and it did. Thanks to them. So, thank you, guys. And secondly, I would like to thank Jonah Remberg, who made this presentation. If you want to stand up, Jonah. Great job. And finally, I want to thank the whole Mooresville Youth Council for coming and showing up today and for all the hard work you guys did throughout the year. So, thank you, guys, for staying committed, and I'm excited for what you guys do next year and so on, so.
Stand up, guys. We'll see you.
As a part of the Mooresville Youth Council, I have worked on my communication skills and also my planning skills. As a member, you're in charge of working on numerous projects, and you have to be responsible and uphold your part of the project.
I found myself giving a lot of ideas that people actually listened to and heard. They just made sure that all my ideas were put into motion, and they made sure that they were heard at some point.
You know, all these people are really dedicated. They want to, you know, make a difference and, you know, make a change here. I think that's really amazing to see and be able to work with like a group of young people who want the future and just to be able to do projects that are, they're passionate about.
It's really given me such an amazing insight into the workings within local government, given me a lot of teamwork and communication skills, and really let me take on a really cool leadership-type position on actual town projects.
So, we're going to call everyone up before you get your certificate. If you'll stay up here, they're going to have another photo op with the board. So first up is Benjamin. Jonah. Jael. Evelyn. Catherine. And Mahalan. And so, this group got the highest level of points that you can get. They committed a huge amount of time to that, so I want to recognize them for their gold level service to the group this year. Next, we have Juliana. Hannah. Will. Yazwan. Indu. And Yajit. And I think Shannon has a few special awards to give here as well.
So, the first award we're going to present is for Superstar. We had one particular council member that was very involved, and I think he came to every meeting and every event that we put on and hosted. This is his second year in the Youth Council, and so, we've got a special frame made for him with some pictures over the year, and also a card with a gift card in it for his future endeavors. Great kid and very dedicated.
Commissioners, let's get a photo.
Yes. Yes, okay. So, we had a standout guy in terms of our media, so we called him the tech talent. His name is Jonah. And then, there is a new award that we're doing, it's called the Zippy, because I don't know if you guys know who the stormwater mascot is, but it's a snail, which the Youth Council put on a contest for naming, and his name was Zippy. So, this individual came out of his shell this year, Mahalan.
And actually, Mahalan actually was a fantastic Zippy.
Now we can get caught.
Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and move on to Item Three, which is the Manager's Report. Mr. Heeman.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the chance to be here today. Tough act to follow, Zippy the snail. My grandson absolutely loved Zippy. So, we had a little event over the weekend. We had a fantastic event over the weekend with perfect weather for Liberty Park Reimagine. Around eight thousand people in attendance. One of the great things about this was the number of folks that had comments about the event, and I can tell you, as a manager, that the most fun that I have is to see folks in our community having fun and getting together for events like this. So, you can read some of the comments here. I had some folks that just closed on a house and moved here, and they got a good first impression of Mooresville. Had some other folks talking about the new park and how we've outdone ourselves. I just want to thank Pam and all her staff and all the community volunteers. You know, my wife asked me, "Who are the people in the yellow t-shirts?" I said, "Those are all volunteers." So, thank you for everybody that worked on this. And I thought this was a great one as well, from the lady that we call Vinnie's mom, Ms. Leanne Giglio, talking about what an amazing day it was. It was also great to look up from down below and see all the folks on balconies at Mill One, and I know everybody had a great time. These are just a few of the pictures, and as you can see, I think we've got a blown-up one in a little bit, but you can see how many people are out there at the one overhead event. And I thought what made this great were the details, and I don't think I've even told Pam this, but when I saw that actually the Wizards' presentation was livestreamed, and I know this because I was in the way of the camera, and I thank you all for gently moving me, but the Wizards were actually, that was all on camera live, and the folks that were already seated for the concert got to watch the ribbon cutting and the Wizards afterward. So, it was just really well-planned and really appreciate all that you guys did. And yes, our very own Commissioner Compton made the first shot on the new court. He made the last shot. Now, did you really make it? And I see that you shot it, but did you make it?
That's a layout that's guaranteed to go in.
Very good. I want to also welcome our new Dogmare, Elmer, who is a three-year-old bulldog, and that was announced on Saturday, and we thank our outgoing Dogmare Buttercup, who was great and was at many events, and I guess Elmer's going to be at a lot of events in the future. We had our You Matter Butterfly Bench also was out Saturday and available, and you can see that is a reminder of the importance of mental health awareness and suicide prevention, and the green color signifies new life and new growth and new beginnings. And we want to thank Evelyn Gardner for doing that, and she's also a Mooresville Youth Council Senior. We had Juneteenth at Willow Valley Park. Our Mooresville Fire and Rescue does a great job at all these events, and they are always there and serving the community. We also had the library out there, Marion and her folks, and had a lot of other folks that volunteered, and then we had some folks that sponsored things out there that are on this board that probably don't want to be named, that are humble. The snow cones were sponsored by one of our Commissioners, I understand, so we appreciate that, but had a great event, and I understand attendance was good there as well. And this is our new Fire Rescue One truck. We did not get to roll it out in the rain for the preview before the meeting, but it was in service at Juneteenth and also at Liberty Park Reimagine. Wanted to also talk about our Special Olympics. For those of you that don't know, we have one of the larger groups, probably the largest for a city of our size, and we had a number of folks from Mooresville that got medals in five sports. You can see bowling, swimming, basketball, sailing, and powerlifting, and so we had thirty-eight gold medals, twenty-three silver, and eight bronze, so a great showing from our folks for Special Olympics. And I just wanted to mention Christine Patterson. She has done a fantastic job, not only putting the events together, but also kind of being the face of these events. She's gone on TV several times. This is her on WBT, talking about the Hundred and Fiftieth, and she just does everything that she touches. She does with great enthusiasm, and I just wanted to recognize and thank her for doing that. We had our Police Department Summer Camp. In addition to what we do, this is kind of a mini version of what we do with adults that we recognize tonight. So, Mooresville Police Department had their summer camp, and they got to explore crime scenes, do fingerprinting, and got to meet canines and talk about the SRT, do bike patrol dispatch, so they got exposed to all those things. These are the kind of things that make an impression on folks of this age, and hopefully some will choose a career eventually or explore a career based on this exposure. We are very fortunate to have our ADC Director, Jen Bosser, recognized as the Most Admired CEO Award from the Charlotte Business Journal, and, you know, when you see something like this and you realize that it comes from your peers, it means even more. So, Jen and her staff do a great job for us and wanted to recognize her for that award. At this point, I'm going to transition a little bit into all those other outside agencies that help us, and you've heard some reports on some of this work, but I just wanted to recognize all of them because, like the folks that do our academies, they are a very important part of connecting to the town. Our Community Relations Committee has done a lot of work. They did organize the MLK Day of Service. The Mooresville worked with the Mooresville Kindness Closet on that. Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast and Birthday, or Breakfast and Peace Walk. They did the Diverse and United Challenge with a hundred and sixty-four members that took that challenge, including your manager and your assistant manager over there, Ryan Race, signed that pledge, and they are hosting our first multicultural festival on October 21st at Liberty Park. We look forward to that. Public Arts Committee, you've seen this, there again, Pam and her folks have done a great job. The Lowes supported us with our mural project. We appreciate that, and they developed the merchandise that showcased the mural and its stakeholders, and they've got some rotating installations like the Piano Project at Moore Park and some other art installations that you'll see around, and they continue to do additional things. Our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is very involved in selecting the parks that are going to be improved next with our Neighborhood Park Program, and they work to expand recreational facilities and opportunities and develop public interest in the parks. Our Historic Preservation Commission is advocating for expansion of the Historic Preservation Overlay District. We're part of the nomination for the pump station building at 422 East Moore that's now on the National Register and continuing to do great work. Our EPC, Environmental Protection Committee, probably been one of the busiest years ever, and I told somebody today, based on how much of my backyard is washed away, I wish I would have done what they're doing on this hill. This is actually a demonstration on how to plant grass on a slope, which takes a different skill set and different materials to do this. A really good presentation, and that was done at Creek Week. They also planted native trees, you can see there, have worked on distributing pollinator plants and had this workshop. Creek Week was a great success. It's also not on here, but they did the cleanup of the creek that week as well. Our Planning Board heard fifty-four cases this past year. You can see the numbers there. Very busy year for them. Board of Adjustment also had seven meetings, and you can see worked on variance watershed, special use permits, and new rules and procedures. And our Community Development Advisory Committee, our newer committee, voted to recommend three projects that you funded and continues to work on projects like affordable housing. And I wanted to close with this slide. I wanted to blow up of this just because it really is a great testament to your investment in the community. It's great to work for a board that says, "If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, and we'll invest in this," and I think it will pay off huge dividends in the lives of our citizens. Just wanted to thank you for making that possible. And with that, Mayor, I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Heeman. Comments or questions, Commissioners? Thank you, sir. At this time, Chair will recognize Commissioner Bobby Compton for historical Mooresville moment.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. This goes back to 1949. Notice of an Amendment to the Charter of the Town of Mooresville pursuant to the provisions of House Bill 446 as ratified on March 21st, 1949. A special election is hereby called to be held on Tuesday, the 11th day of October, 1949, as provided by North Carolina General 1949, as provided by North Carolina General Statutes, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters the following amendment to the Town Charter. The Charter of the Town of Mooresville County amended to adding thereto the following. The Board of Commissioners shall appoint a City Manager, who shall be the administrative head of the town government, shall be responsible for the administration of all departments of the town government. He should be appointed with regard to merit only. He need not be a resident of the town when appointed. He shall hold office during the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners and shall receive such compensation as it shall fix by ordinance. The City Manager, so appointed, shall have the powers, duties, and responsibilities as prescribed for City Managers under Plan D as outlined in North Carolina General Statutes. Accept the right to appoint the Town Attorney, Town Auditor, which shall remain with the Board of Commissioners. Could not find the vote results, but I assume it passed because they've had a town manager since. But I'm surprised we've been incorporated since 1973 and just in 1949 got a town manager. That was a shock to me. I had no idea. I can remember back to the 1960s, as far back as I go. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Compton. Good stuff.
And I want to appreciate Alan Bradford, our town IT guy and Mooresville Museum rep for providing all this information to me. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, folks.
Commissioners, if you go ahead and take a look at the adjustments to the agenda, we do have two additions. We have an amendment to 5G on the consent. We have two additions to the consent, 5R and 5S, as you can see. Additionally, for the regular agenda, if you take a look under Appointments, under Agenda Item 6E, there's been a revision to the list of names for closed session, consult with attorney. We've added State of North Carolina versus Jermaine Sanders, and we'll add Cindy Gardner versus Town of Mooresville as well. So with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adjustments to the Agenda, the Consent Agenda and Regular Agenda as submitted.
Submit, Mayor.
Commissioner Compton has made the motions. Your second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Dingler. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Commissioners, we're going to go ahead and move right on into Agenda Item 6A. This is regarding the CDBG Consolidated Plan and Citizen Participation Plan. Becca, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. We are in the final phase of the CDBG entitlement process. So we are at the tail end of the 30-day public comment period that is being hosted on the 23 to 2027 Consolidated Plan and the Citizen Participation Plan. So tonight, we are just hosting a public hearing. We're getting, taking public comments on the two plans. There's not a vote to be had tonight. That will happen on July 5th to approve the plan, the plans, excuse me. But tonight, we are just taking public comment on that. A few quick updates on that. So the 2023 to 2027 Consolidated Plan is the first ever CDBG Consolidated Plan that we will have done. It guides five years' worth of programming and grant utilization. And there will be yearly grant applications submitted and accepted to see how we're going to be utilizing the funds each year. We are supposed to be getting $222,398 for this fiscal year. And we will be submitting all of these plans to HUD in July for a September 1st program's start date. Along with the Consolidated Plan, we also have the Citizen Participation Plan, which is approved in conjunction with the Consolidated Plan. And it outlines how citizens will be encouraged to participate in the CDBG program, how we're going to be getting their feedback on how we should be utilizing these funds.
Thank you, Becca. And if the public wants to provide feedback or any comments, how would they do that?
It's on the town's website.
Okay.
All the plans are there. And then the web, the email address is for myself and our partners at Central Lina. Comments can be submitted that way.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioners? Exciting work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 6B. This is a public hearing to consider conditional rezoning request for 1326 Rocky River Road. At this time, the Chair will put up the public hearing and recognize Mr. Priest.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. So tonight is a conditional rezoning application submitted by the property owner, RR3 LLC. The applicant is Legacy Point Rocky River LLC, and the address is 136 Rocky River Road. The size of the property is about four acres. It is currently in the town limits and is not in the watershed. So a little bit of background on the property. The property is essentially what's known as the Food Lion Shopping Center. It's at the corner of Shears Road and Rocky River Road. The development was approved for a conditional rezoning. The whole development was back in 2007. And when the property was rezoned, there was a specific exclusion of a use, which was mini storage. So that use under that 2007 rezoning was not permitted. Fast forward to 2019, an applicant came back and specifically requested, the owner at that time, requested to rezone or modify the rezoning to remove that exclusion or exclude the exclusion, if you might say. So that's where the property currently sits. It's rezoned the way it was in 2007, except that mini storage exclusion is no longer there. So on the left-hand side, you see a photo of the 2007 plan that was approved. And on the right, you see an aerial photography of the parcel in question. It's in the back right or the southeast portion of the Food Lion development. Here's just a couple of pictures of the Food Lion on the left, looking from Shears Road. And then again, from Shears Road on the right, looking straight back to where the subject's site would be and where their driveway would be. There's just a couple more pictures of the site in question that's proposed to be developed from the perspective of that rear parking lot. So the current district is general business conditional use. Again, this is the 2007 conditional rezoning, and it's the old 1986 zoning ordinance that it's vested under. The uses that are allowed are pretty much everything from the 1986 zoning ordinance, except I think there were six or seven that were excluded, that were listed in the staff report. The request is to rezone this specific parcel to conditional corridor mixed use. And the only use that would be allowed in this zoning is the self-storage facility. They've excluded all uses except the self-storage. The updated rezoning would only apply to this parcel. The rest of the Food Lion development would still be under that GBCU 2007 rezoning as modified. So the concept plan proposed a two-to-three-story self-storage facility, as you can see here. Two-story in the front, closer to the Food Lion. And as the topography goes down to the back, to the east, it would be three-story. A total of 117,000 square feet and an estimated 750 storage units. So the property does not have any frontage on a public street. It is only accessed through public access easements through the Food Lion Shopping Center parking lot. The buffers would be, as shown. The southern portion of the property would remain undeveloped. But as we'll discuss in just a moment, there is a future hope for future street connectivity, and at a later time, the southern portion of the development might be developed. So the concept plan, as just mentioned, is withholding and highlighted in red there some easements with the hope that if the properties along Shears Road, because they're close to a node, if they rezone to commercial and a public street is able to come through, this property would have much better access, much better street connectivity, and much better visibility to a public street. So the applicants are reserving easements to make those future connections in the future for hopes for future connectivity. Here are some pictures that were included in the conditions. However, please note that these are not specific elevations offered as conditions. They're offered as general design of what the buildings may look like. There are some architectural conditions that were proposed. And those specific conditions verbally are what the conditions are. These photos are just for general designed ideas. So here's a summary of the conditions proposed. Again, we mentioned the easements to the property for future connectivity. Size, two stories in the front, three in the rear. Sidewalks and an urban open space on the frontage, the buffers. And then one that was added during the Planning Board discussion, the building will generally blend in with the design of the existing shopping center buildings. So there's a lot of masonry mixed in. So the applicants agreed to add a condition to try to blend the two designs there. And a staff recommended condition that we'll just talk about in a moment is to complete a five-foot sidewalk from the Food Lion sidewalk that exists on the site to the subject property. So the neighborhood meeting took place on March 29th at the Mooresville Public Library, and no one from the public attended that meeting. So going through the UDO standards, decision standards for rezonings, staff looked at the first two there in regard to the UDO standards, and it was clear in our minds that it met it. It met those standards. The next three, three, four, and five, we thought that they did partially. And just wanted to take a minute to go through those to describe the partial recommendation there. So the first one is the request consistent with a comprehensive plan and any other relevant plans. Well, for consistency, they're proposing to go to CM, corridor mixed use, which is consistent with a node and consistent with what you would see at a node, mixture of uses, commercial, residential. So that checks that box. However, what's inconsistent, the One Mooresville Plan talks about in these nodes, you create walkable centers, right? Office and retail and residential where people can get and go to in a pedestrian way. Warehouses don't necessarily go to the top of the list as far as providing that walkable consistency. So there's an inconsistency there a little bit. Then also, Policy 315 and 316 of the One Mooresville Plan talks about having street-oriented buildings, and again, pedestrian-oriented buildings. But the existing situation with this lot is it's removed from the street and doesn't have frontage on that public infrastructure. However, then, the context of the property, staff recommends to keep in mind, this is an existing situation. It's been this way since 2007. They're not proposing to put forward a landlocked lot. It exists that way. And usually, those pedestrian-oriented, walkable uses like offices and retail, they need more visibility. So a storage center might be the type of use that fits right in to this existing situation. They are adding easements for potential connectivity in the future, so that really helps. One thing that staff does recommend is to really meet that consistency recommendation is along the green, there's existing sidewalk from Shears Road to the Food Lion down. And that small red area is the missing gap. The property owner for the Food Lion has given written recommendation and approval to fill in that gap with sidewalk, if the applicant would like to do that. And so we just recommend filling that gap in to really get that consistency. So is the request compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the property? So consistent? Both are retail sales and service uses in our UDO underneath that category. Inconsistency? Little bit in regard to architecture, right? Pitched roof, brick buildings, and what's proposed is flat roof and more of a concrete-type design. But the applicant has added a condition that said they would blend the materials even though they want to keep the flat roof. So staff finds that acceptable. Will the request encourage development areas that can be reasonably served by public infrastructure? Consistent? It's in Tier One of our One Mooresville Plan, so water and sewer is available. Inconsistent? There's no access onto a public street. However, the applicants have submitted a maintenance agreement with the shopping center property owner, that they're working out those things together. And so they're all on the same page in that regard. So staff's recommendation is approval of CZ 2023-02 with the conditions listed, because with those conditions, it really brings up to code an existing situation and highlights connectivity and pedestrian orientation for the future. Again, with that one condition added, that that short little area of circuit sidewalk be added by the applicant. The Planning Board recommended approval with the existing conditions as shown. So that concludes my presentation. And the applicant is here, Jamie Rolowitz with Legacy Point, I believe, has a few slides that he'd like to go over with the board as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, let me go ahead and see if the Commissioners have any comments or questions for you. Anything, Commissioners, for staff, for Mr. Priest? Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome the applicant forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name's Jamie Rolowitz with Legacy Point Properties. We have a few slides we want to go over, and I appreciate Brad for putting his presentation We've been in the area, Lake Norman area, developing for about 20 years. Just a little bit of brief history of us. We've developed office, warehouse, medical office, and storage. We're actually the developer, the builder, and we're the owner of the project. So we'll be, you know, self-performing the build on this. And here's a few examples of some of the different projects we've built, from Cornelius to Mooresville. In 2022, we built a facility on Ebert Lane, which is across the interstate from the Costco, if you're headed south. And you'll see the facility there. We're at about 35% occupancy now, which we're far ahead of our projections of where we thought we'd be. And I wanted to put a note that you'll see the picture on the right is a large loading area, similar to what we're proposing. All the loading and unloading will be done inside. It's in climate-controlled conditions, so there won't be any noise, you know, outside the facility. You know, I think Brad mentioned this is an out parcel, doesn't have any major road visibility. So we think this is a great use for this site. It's adjacent to the residential, which will offer kind of a quiet buffer. All of our trucks and vehicles, similar to that loading bay, will be at this facility, and all that'll happen inside. It'll be limited to noise and any traffic. We do have needed access, you know, through the shopping center. There's a low car count with our use, and we anticipate average of four to six vehicles a day, typical once the facility is fully occupied. Our construction timeline is roughly six months from the time we dig footers. So there'll be minimal disruption, you know, for our build. We have contacted the shopping center folks, and they're asking us, and we're going to provide some additional signage to have the vehicular traffic enter through the rear of their Food Lion. As I mentioned, the interior loading, we're providing the sidewalk connectivity to the shopping center, and we're also including a landscape plaza in the open space of the Brad mentioned, also want to know, you know, we're providing future connectivity in hopes that as the parcels adjacent to us develop, that we'll have some additional visibility and connectivity. You know, we're not planning anything on the excess land right now. The buffers and the uses around us would prohibit, you know, any building of any size. So most likely, that would sit until the land around it was developed. Brad mentioned the sidewalks from the existing Shears Road. We have everything for connectivity but the one island. And we do have approval from the shopping center to put a sidewalk on that one island. We would prefer not to have a condition that we're required to do it. If they change their mind, or if they sold the shopping center between now and when we got started, and we don't have a formal agreement with them, you know, we would hate to see our project held up over five-foot a sidewalk. You know, we don't anticipate that happening, but there's always that chance. So though we plan to move forward and do it, we would like to not have that as a condition. Here are some actual renderings that we had done of this facility that we would like to build. We think this would blend well with the existing building. Keep in mind, we're looking at the back of the Food Lion, and the back of that is just raw block. So we're going to enhance that area with our facility. We're a blend of siding and stucco. And you can see the loading bay, how that's tucked back in where the actual loading would occur. And then this is the side of the building we've, where we could have potentially a future access and roadway. We've kind of dressed up the side also in hopes that, you know, if we did have a second access, that the building would kind of have a nice appeal. And I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, discussion. And I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, discussion.
I'll see if commissioners have any questions, and I want to recognize Ms. Crawford. Comments or questions? Commissioner Compton?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the sidewalk, it looks like that area, that whole area, most of it's asphalt.
Yes.
And it's just that little island for the concrete, I don't see what the big deal is. Because if you're going to strike across the asphalt, I assume, so people will know that that's a sidewalk? I mean, if you just put concrete straight up on that little island, nobody knows what that is, because there's no connection, because you got parking lot, it's asphalt. So, could you, and according to one page I was looking at, page 83 in our packet, it shows white stripes across the asphalt like it's a parking lot, I mean, like it's a sidewalk.
Right.
So, it seems like that would suffice for your sidewalk connection from the food line property to your property.
Yes, and if they'll continue to let us, you know, we don't have anything formally signed, we have a letter with them that they agreed to let us do it, and we anticipate to put the, you know, the markings or the paintings on the asphalt.
The markings, exactly, exactly. I think that's what I would say, oh, yes, you know, somebody's going to walk down there, and I doubt if they do, they're going to say, oh, yes, a sidewalk, and they'll walk across that, very little vehicular traffic back there anyway.
Right.
So, just walking across the striped part of the asphalt, in my opinion, that's just me, would suffice as far as your sidewalk.
Right, I mean, we're happy to do both, stripe that area and modify that island, we just, we intend to do it, we just would prefer not to have a condition in case they change their mind.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Qualls?
Yeah, along that same vein, I believe Ms. Crawford had, was going to kind of give us a clarification of can we require something like that on someone else's property?
Yeah, generally, you know, the applicant is correct, they would have to obtain approval from the adjacent property owner to give an easement, we don't know if they will formally convey an easement. You could make that condition subject to obtaining an easement if you wanted to, but you don't need to require that as a condition, that's totally in the discretion of the board.
So, that is one that we could strike from that, I mean, strongly suggest, but not to the applicant's point of holding up a development for a sidewalk, but, you know, if the food line or whoever owns the shopping center doesn't want to follow through with that, that's hard to hold up a project like that.
And in talking with the food line folks, I mean, they do have an out parcel there that's adjacent to their facility that I assume at some point in the near future, they're talking about expanding, and, you know, when that's done, it would seem like to be the time, if by chance, they didn't allow us or change their mind, you know, that's going to be probably coming in front of this, you know, board in the next few years, I would assume, but.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's appetite to make that a condition for you, but appreciate you, your willingness to work with staff on the recommendation for the future, and I think to Commissioner Compton's point, the striping should probably work fine for now. Commissioner Qualls?
Yeah, just one other question, and I don't know if it needs to be conditioned on here, but, you know, we keep talking about storage, is there a requirement that this is all indoor storage, no outdoor storage?
It's 100% indoor storage.
Sharon, is that something that needs to be on a condition that everything's all indoor, that there's no outdoor storage?
Yeah, we can certainly clarify that, and just a question for Mr. Priest. Mr. Priest, is that incorporated into the eight conditions here that are listed on page Or do we need to add a number nine that all storage would be?
There is not a specific condition about that.
Okay.
Other than, I would say, the concept plan, not itemizing an area for outdoor storage, so therefore would have to be inside, but we could specifically put that in as a condition to clarify.
Okay, so maybe we add a ninth condition that all storage will be indoor storage? Okay.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Qualls?
No, I'm not opposed.
Anybody else?
I just want to clarify, is the applicant agreeable, just for the record, on page 86, we have a list of eight conditions listed out, and then the addition of a ninth condition that all storage will be indoor storage at the facility?
We're agreeable to that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions, there is no one from the public that signed up to speak to this public hearing, so with that, the chair's going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Commissioner Qualls? Commissioner Diggle, yeah, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve CZ 2023-02 through zoning to CMX because the proposal is consistent with the Town of Mooresville One Mooresville Plan, specifically the proposal resoning to the CM zoning district is consistent with use recommended in the neighborhood center node, the requirement is reasonable, and in the public centers, because it updates the design requirements to the site, the current UDO allowing development for a limited-access lot, and attaches reasonable conditions to the plan, which establish consistency with the adjacent development.
Commissioner Diggle's made the motion, Commissioner Qualls seconded the motion, discussion, hearing none, others in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, the zoning request has been approved. Commissioners, we'll move on to public hearing, it's Agenda Item 6C, this is for a text amendment. Chair will open the public hearing, recognize Ms. Martin.
So, this is a request from Sheds by Design, it would be to create a new use called accessory structure cells. The reason stated for this text amendment would be to allow accessory structure cells as a primary use, currently such cells are only possible for large retailers. So, with the proposed amendment is a very simple definition of what accessory structure cells would be. Additionally, this would be a use permitted by right in both the community commercial district and hybrid light industrial district. There are several requirements that would go along with this sort of use, including 1,000 square feet of heated principal structure for the office, no more than 20 accessory structures for cell and display, no more than 40% of the front yard used for that cell and display. The structure size cannot be greater than 350 square feet, light repair and service would be allowed, but it would count towards the 20, and there's a distance requirement of 300 feet between this use and the same use, and 750 feet, they have to be 750 feet away from our nodes. So, from the standards we look at for text amendments, we found that it met most of them, other than there's no change in conditions, but staff does find this amendment to be reasonable. So, staff recommends approval of TA 21, or 23-01, because it's consistent with the One Mooresville Plan. The proposal does provide requirements that restrict the proliferation of such uses on prominent commercial properties in the town, and the planning board also recommends approval. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Comments or questions? Commissioners? Commissioner DeWes?
Yeah, so it seems like this would, there's no minimum lot size on this request, is that correct?
That is correct, staff just proposed a cap to how many could be on the site.
So, they could put 20 of these on a half-acre lot?
As written, they could.
And this would be within the town limits, so we've had issues like this before, where it was very unsightly to have so many on such a small parcel of land, it doesn't seem like this is, limiting that is actually making it legal by changing the UDO. I'm not opposed necessarily to defining this as a primary business, if that's what's necessary, but it seems to me that 20 units is far excessive of, without any kind of minimal lot size or where the structure's going to actually be.
Sure, so this would be a new use, and so any of the parameters within this proposal could be changed, it could become special use permit, you could have acreage requirements, limit the number of units, very flexible until adopted.
Thank you.
Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, yes, Ms. Martin, so, kind of in line with Commissioner DeWes, you know, I can't support this as it stands, because that's an awful lot of units in one small space. I mean, if it was restructured to, you know, you have to have this amount of space or acreage per certain amount of units, or something like a special use, did we consider perhaps making this a special use?
Yeah, so that would be a very easy modification to the ordinance tonight, instead of it having a P for permitted use in the ordinance, you would have an S for a special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to clarify, if it has a special permit or special use, it would come before the board? And answer any questions about how large the lot size is, how many units, and the board could determine whether or not they issue that?
Right now, right, how the ordinance, the UDO is currently written, it would go to the Board of Adjustment through some text amendments that are coming your way, special use permits might be returning to this board, but either way, if it's a special use permit, it would be a quasi-judicial procedure. If it was conditional zoning, it'd be very much like a rezoning, so you could do either option.
Commissioner DeWes?
I agree with pretty much everything everyone said, but to me, we just need, and not so much to say no to this use, but it needs some parameters, it needs a design, it needs a lot, it needs, where it just doesn't pop up on a corner and we say, wow, I mean, it's just, so if either if it's special use or conditional use, or whatever staff wants to call it, it's just, I think it's a case-by-case item, and you look at it from what it's worth and where it's going to go, and how it fits into the neighborhood and the surroundings, you know, I just, I hate to see them just sitting out here on just a dang lot and grass and, you know, and gravel and mud, I mean, what's it look like, you know, and some parameters around that, but I agree with what's been said, but we need, to me, case-by-case.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Qualls?
Sure, thank you. Again, not to repeat what everybody else has said, but I think, you know, this, as I interpret this as pretty wide open, that, you know, if they can be 350 square feet per structure, 20 of those, that's 7,000 square foot versus 1,000 square foot of a office space, I don't even know that that even matches or comes close to our current requirements for like car sales.
Right, this, again, this is creating a brand-new use, and so, yes, it could allow a very small office as part of the use, as currently written.
And, you know, accessory structures, even in our current UDO, if I were to put an accessory unit such as this at my house, we have pretty restrictive guidelines of where those can be, just even in the town, as a town property to put on this size of a building, right? I mean, the requirement has to be so many feet off the setback, and so I'm guessing that the buyers of these are probably not town residents.
I don't know, but I will say the applicants are here this evening that might be able to share their customer base, but I'm not able to answer that question.
You know, the map that you included, and thank you so much for that, for the CC and the CM districts, so it has all this red on there, primarily all along 150, you know, allowing that all along a main corridor in our town, I just feel like the guidelines would be pulled in a little bit more, and definitely with a special use, but some limits on the size of the lot and landscape requirements, and definitely 20 is, it seems a bit much, in my opinion, so I couldn't support this as it's written currently.
Additional discussion, I mean, additional questions? Commissioner Houston?
I agree with everyone, this is not something I want to see like when I go to the beach, and you see them stacked here in the little lots and stuff. I think we need a little bit more time and get perimeter sass, and what's that area these things ought to be in, and what area they should be in, I think this is a push, and I need to stick with those until we get a little bit more guideline, I think this board, we need to do a little bit more discussion on, just because this is asphalt, I mean, they're usable, I have a couple of them, but I don't want to see them sitting on our downtown Main Street, thoroughfares coming in the border on every half-acre lot, I don't want to see that, and that's not the vision of Moore's, we're trying to make our thoroughfares very nice and pleasing, people coming into town, I don't think that's what they want to see coming into our town. So, I think we need to look at this thing a little bit deeper before we go forward with any project like this, we stick with what we have until we can come up with a better plan, I would not vote for this.
So, Commissioners, we do have the option to continue this public hearing, maybe bring it back in August, but the applicant is here, would you like to at least hear from the applicant? Or just continue this public hearing, or I'll leave it up to the board? Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad the applicant is here, I'm not sure the applicant could really change my mind on it, my suggestion would be continue it, maybe, Ms. Martin, bring back some ratios of these units per square feet that could be out there, and maybe change it to a special use, case by case, as Commissioner Diggle referred to.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Compton?
I just concur, look at the map, as Qualls showed, I'll go, I'd say no if they're legal on every, on all this red spot here, absolutely not. However, if they come up with one of this little red dot right up here, wherever it is, and if it looks okay, depending on the size, I may say yes. To come back with something like that, that would be case-by-cases already stated, thank you.
So, if the applicant is here, there's no one that has signed up for public comment, so if you don't want to hear from the applicant, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion that we continue this to the August board meeting, not sure what date we want to set for that, Ms. Crawford?
It's August 7th, yeah, I have one.
August 7th, so let's, I'll make a motion we continue it to August 7th, to allow staff some time to, can shove in their pencil, bring it back with some limitations as a special use.
So, Commissioner West has made the motion to continue the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Houston. Additional discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6D, this is for outside agency funding, chair will recognize Town Manager Randy Heeman. And I would ask, if you take a look in front of you, you should have a spreadsheet with the agency fundings that you'll be considering for tonight for outside funding, there's also other funding requests for human services nonprofits that you're aware of, but to get to this evening, we'll tackle this, and then y'all can determine how you'd like to move forward with the other outside agency request.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point out, and you probably recall this from last year or so, two years ago, there was some legislation passed by the state that Sharon will go into a little more detail, but in essence, what we've done in the budget process for the last two years is put a lump sum of funds in for outside agency funding, so that we meet those statutory requirements, so that's what we did again this year, and I'll ask Sharon if she'd like to elaborate a little bit more on how this needs to proceed in order to meet those statutory requirements.
Thank you, Mayor Heeman. Yes, so, as the board is aware, you know, the statute prohibits a board member who currently serves on a nonprofit board from participating or deliberating in a vote to award funding to the affected agency, and so, as we go through these requests tonight, I think if a board member does sit on a nonprofit board who is requested, they will need to be recused to leave the meeting and then come back as we go through these individually.
Okay.
Yep.
If there are no questions, I'll go ahead, and our first funding request that's recommended is for the Mooresville Community Children's Theater for $15,000.
Any comments or questions from Mr. Heeman? Is there a motion?
It's our move, Mayor.
Commissioner West has made the motion to approve funding of $15,000, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Compton, discussion, hearing none, others in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our second up is the Iredale Council on Aging for $48,570 recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Heeman? Hearing none, who would like to make a motion? Commissioner DeWes? Commissioner DeWes is making a motion to approve that $48,570 request, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Houston, discussion, hearing none, others in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third funding request was for the Mooresville South Iredale Chamber of Commerce, and the recommendation was for $35,000.
Comments or questions for Mr. Heeman? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Houston's made the motion to approve the $35,000. Commissioner Houston's made the motion to approve the $35,000 funding request. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Qualls. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next up is the Morseville Artist Guild, and the recommendation is $48,627.
Comments or questions for Mr. Heeman? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Commissioner Compton's made the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dingler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, at this time, the chair is requesting to be recused from the next two items for the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation and the Morseville Downtown Commission. Commissioner Mayor Protim Qualls request a motion be made to allow me to recuse myself from these two items.
The mayor's made a motion to be recused. Is there a, to make that motion?
I make a motion to recuse the mayor from this item.
For both of you.
Commissioner Compton has, has made the motion to recuse Mayor Atkins from the Iredell EDC Corporation vote, and the Morseville Downtown Commission is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeWes. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll go ahead and, I'm going to make that presentation.
So the recommendation for the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation is for $167,536.
The request from Iredell Economic Development Corporation of 167, 536,000, or, yeah, $536. Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Commissioner Houston's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Compton's made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is Morseville Downtown Commission, and the recommendation is 163.
Excuse me. Mayor Protim, I need to recuse myself due to my affiliation with the Morseville Downtown Commission.
Great. Commissioner Compton's made that request. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to do that.
I need everybody motion for you. Commissioner West has made the motion, and Commissioner DeWes is second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize, I forgot we had two on that one. So the recommendation for Morseville Downtown Commission is $163,301.
Any questions on the request for the Morseville Downtown Commission for $163,301? No questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner West has made the motion, Commissioner Dingler has made the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bring back the Travel and Road Show.
Thank you, commissioners. I do think we have one more. Mr. Heeman?
Yes, the final recommendation was for $6,000 for the YMCA for the July 3, 2023 events.
Any questions for Mr. Heeman? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make that motion that we approve the $6,000 for the Morse YMCA, July 3, event.
Commissioner Qualls, any other motions? Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner DeWes. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners, we have one more agenda item. This is agenda item 6E. This is the nominating committee, and the chair recognizes Commissioner Compton.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to commend Jen Glazer, our clerk, for this huge book and all these pages. Jane, Jane Peter, and Peterson, and Glazer, the three ladies in the manager's office, put this together, 2023 Citizen Advisory Committee Application Packet. This book is full of applications to our committees and commissions and so on. It's a lot of work to go through for these ladies, I really appreciate that, but it makes it easier for Commissioner Qualls, Houston, and myself to go through it and make these selections that we're getting ready to present for the various committee appointments. I'd like to start with the ABC Board, three-year term. Mr. Erskine Smith and Mr. Mark Childers are appointed. Are we going to do this one at a time, or do it all at once?
It's up to the board, y'all. Do we have, deserve preference? We can just, we can just do the whole slate?
The whole thing. Okay, next will be the Community Development Advisory Committee, three-year terms. Mr. Steve Roy, we have Colby Hall, Kyle Burns, Julie Woodridge, Timothy McLennan, and Sarah Vingo. For Community Relations Committee, three-year terms, Eddie Carragher, Cynthia Ballback, Jessica.
I think that got, that's been delayed. Look at your slide up here.
Oh, excuse me. Where am I at? Community Relations. Delayed to, I'm sorry, 7:5. Jen, why you tell me that? Next, Historic Preservation, three-year terms, Hannah Willow, William Avon, Megan Black, and Bill Goodnow. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, three-year terms, Michael Hotsey, Cara Bailey, Anne Blaney Armstrong, and Louis Rigori. Planning Board, three-year terms, Rosalyn Campbell, Laura Temple, and Greg Peretz. And then lastly, Travel and Tourism, we have Michael Gander, and Andrew Mills, and Paul Kynes.
Thank you, Commissioner Compton. So commissioners, just to remind you that serving on the nominating committee is Commissioner Houston and Commissioner Qualls, along with Commissioner Compton. This is their proposed slate of candidates for appointments. So I'll take that as a, a motion and a second from Compton and Qualls. That's all right? And then any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So commissioners, we will be going into closed session. To consult with attorney under GS 143-318-11A3, please note the additions that we had for Consult with Attorney, which is State of North Carolina versus Jermaine Sanders, also Cindy Gardner versus Towne-Morseville. We'll also be meeting to discuss economic development under GS 143-318-11A4, acquisition of property under GS 143-318-11A5, and personnel under GS 143-318-11A6. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
It's a move, Mayor.
Commissioner Compton's made the motion, Commissioner Dingler makes the second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. We'll now go into closed session. Chair will call the meeting back to order, recognize Commissioner Compton.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a very eventful evening, a lot of progress made. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Everybody have a good night.
Commissioner Compton made the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dingler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now adjourned.